Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Van Scis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except Mr. Meyer. I'd like to ask Dr. Venator to please lead us from reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the fine plate.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn their cellphones off or put them into vibrate mode. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the consent agenda personnel? Move item nine, Finance, after the approval of the minutes, and approve the agenda as amended, please. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Beeger, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Dr. Marslov?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. In Williamsville, we value the strong partnership we have with our parents and understand the importance of developing parents as allies in the educational process. Tonight, we are proud to recognize two of our schools and their PTA units for separate achievements that reflect these important ties. Dodge Elementary in the PTA PARP program recently won the New York State Award for its PTA Pick-a-Reading Partner Program. I am happy to introduce Dodge Principal Charlie Smilnic, who is joined by some of his super Dodgers. Together, they will tell us more about this impressive achievement. Mr. Smilnic?
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. Thank you, Board of Education. What I'm going to do is I'm going to give credit where credit is due, and that is to the PARP team. Has he noticed the change on the words of its pick-a-reading partner, which was changed last year, which a lot of people don't know? The PTA did change that as Parents as a Reading Partner to a Pick-a-Reading Partner. And last year, we won the region award. This year, we won the region award again, and they also received the state award, in no particular order. And Mr. Morrissey, Brandon Morrissey's going to come up, Mr. Dave Hemmer, Ginny Hemmer, Danielle Cherry, Lynn Hamish, Suzanne Wagner, Michelle Calisto, Corey Lozaro, Dana Hensley, Amanda Estrada, and Colleen Norris. And I'm going to call up Mr. Morrissey, who was our librarian, as well as Mr. Hemmer, to tell us about everything that they did with their committee.
All right. I'll try to keep my remarks brief, which I'm not really known for, but I do have to give credit where credit is due to the Hemmerses, who have held this whole process for two years straight. We meet 12 times a year for committee meetings. We have reading nights, all kinds of stuff going on. And I seriously fear the day when your family moves on from our school. I just can't say that enough. And I think I had some other things to say, but I get nervous up here. So I'm going to turn it over to our chair, the man who made this all happen, Mr. David Hemmer.
Yeah, thank you, sir. We have a great group of parents, and I'm very proud of what we did. But I also really want to acknowledge the support we've got from the school. So all of you are, I'm sure, well aware of Charlie Smilnic and what he's done in only a few short years at Dodge. But maybe you're not as aware of Brandon Morrissey. Everything of our PARP program goes through the library and goes through Brandon. If you've never visited, I would say go over to Dodge and just stop by and take a look. It's a wonderful place for the kids. It's a wonderful place for our activities. You know, it's not the school library of when I was a kid. You know, it's truly a library and a media center. And we're so fortunate to have Brandon and the support of all the teachers at Dodge. We ask them to come out for evening events, and they volunteer their time. We ask them to keep track of things for us in their classrooms and pass out Pizza Hut certificates and identify super readers every month. And the whole school has been behind it, the literary team, the teachers, the principal, and Mr. Morrissey. And so really, it's an achievement for the whole school, and there's a lot of good things going on at Dodge. So, thank you.
Maple East and its PTA have been named a National PTA School of Excellence for 2017 through 2019. Maple East has earned this designation before, and this year is one of only 143 schools in the nation to receive the honor. I would like to invite PTA co-president Martina Puzano Vuvat to say a few words about this important award for the Maple East school community. Apparently, she couldn't join us this evening, so congratulations, Maple East.[423.62][423.62](applause) I also want to congratulate our communications department for winning two awards in a state communications contest conducted by the New York School Public Relations Association. Our director Rita Wolf and graphic artist Amy Vo Winkle received an Award of Excellence for the district's 2016-17 school calendar and an Award of Honor for the 2017-18 Budget Summary Book. NSBRA sponsors the annual award program to recognize and celebrate outstanding achievement in educational communications. The awards were presented during a special luncheon at the New York State School Boards Association Convention last week in Lake Placid. Board President Mr. Sean Lemay and Board Member Mr. Phil Meyer attended and received the awards on behalf of the district. Congratulations to Mrs. Wolf and Mrs. Vo Winkle on a job well done.[483.12][483.12](applause)
Someone has to take their picture. And she's the one who takes all the pictures. Someone has to take a picture.
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. The key to student success is a great school, and the key to a great school is a great principal. October is National Principals Month, so on behalf of the board, allow me to publicly thank all of our principals for all the excellent work that they do in our schools. Thank you.[532.12][532.12](applause) Are there any other board acknowledgements?
I have one.
Yes?
I would just like to acknowledge and recognize all the individuals that were involved in putting on open house, the administrators, the teachers, the guidance counselors, the librarians, because Mr. Morrissey is definitely here, the custodial staff, and all the students that participated for their additional time in planning and preparing for this evening. We know that throughout the district, all the open houses were just held this past month. And just really wanted to say, as a board member and as a parent, that all of the efforts that these individuals put in does not go unnoticed, and we truly appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board acknowledgements? No? Mrs. Beeger, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you can conclude your remarks at three minutes. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. But rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. Thank you for your cooperation. Would like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and one another by speaking to the issues. Give us ideas, share opinions, but not engaging in personal attacks. Thank you so much. Our first speaker this evening is Melissa Rowland.
Hi, my name's Melissa Rowland. I'm part of a Concerned Parents Group of Williamsville. We're a group of parents that have children with special needs, and we have come together on common ground. Each family has their own story that just needs to be told with time. We have requested, well, not requested, we have asked for the board to sit down with us. We want to express our concerns. We have asked, we are just exhausted. We're exhausted at being told that we don't offer that, we don't do that here. There's a lot of concern throughout several schools within the district through different parents and parents groups. We've had the opportunity to meet, discuss, and figure out what was our best course of action. We are here tonight to ask this board to sit down with us privately, and we don't want to do it publicly. We are concerned of the lack of continuum of programming, the lack of ability of reading specialists to our children of need, the lack of individual education programs, and supportive services. Williamsville seems to have adopted a culture of one-size-fits-all. If your child can't do this, they have to go this way. There's two paths. There's either this path or that path. There's no middle ground. I have spoken publicly before about my son, Jack, who's at North High School now this year, about his issues and his concerns. I'm coming as a representative for the group to sit down and have that open discussion. I will not speak to their stories because that's not for me to do. On Sunday, we had the opportunity to sit down with SEPTA to figure out a better plan to open communication lines with the district, to figure out how we can do better. We need to really figure out what opportunities are we missing with these children and how we improve this community by serving these children of need. They're very important to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Phil Rowland.
My name is Phil Rowland. My son is a special needs child in this district. Our experience within the district has been anything but easy. This includes our concerns being ignored or unanswered. We had to hire an attorney to get an independent evaluation just to have the district ignore the evaluation recommendations. We've been dragged into due process over simple things that could have been easily handled. We are forced to record CSE meetings because changes are being made without our knowledge or consent. Here's an example of what we deal with day to day. We went to a resolution session regarding our son's reading needs. We were told we would receive 30 minutes of one-to-one once a week with a reading specialist. This 30-minute session consisted of the reading specialist putting our son in front of a computer with Systems 44 while she did other work. When we expressed our concerns and asked for a response to this intervention, we received nothing. It is extremely frustrating for our son to receive a much-needed intervention, but the district insists on using tools that provide no benefit to him. The district has been advised that our son requires the Orton-Gillingham reading program because that is what our independent evaluation concluded. Unfortunately, this is not the program he receives in school. We, as responsible parents, pay for specialized Orton-Gillingham tutoring privately. The district is making our son's journey extremely difficult by not providing academic programs he needs to learn to become successful. In conclusion, we ask that the board please meet with us privately to address these needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Stuart Bulan.
First of all, I'm also a member of this group, and I just want to say that the faculty has been tremendous over the years that our son has been in the district. It doesn't seem to be the faculty that's the problem. It seems to be that the higher-ups in the district are the problem because a culture of no has developed. Simple things that shouldn't be a no, like, for example, we wanted to see a placement that they recommended for my son, and the first response was, "No, you can't go see it." And clearly, they knew I had the right, the legal right, to do it, and eventually, they gave in. But why do I have to have that fight? And I don't understand that. I think, one day, my daughter asked me, "How do you judge people?" And I said, "You judge people by how they treat the weakest members of society, the people that need the most help." And if I'm judging the school district by that, you guys are failing because you're not treating our kids and us the right way. You're hurting them instead of helping them, and I don't understand that. The goal of the school system is to help kids. I'm a school teacher in a different district, and I don't get away with the stuff that this district gets away with, and I don't understand it. And we are really begging you to make our kids' lives better, not harder. And this district is making it harder for no apparent reason. You want to be a preeminent school district, then you have to treat everyone equally, just not the top achievers, but the people at the bottom also. And so we are requesting that this board meet with us privately. And I think a lot of this could go away, but this culture of no has to change, and that's the key. These simple things just are not no. They're like, "Maybe we can do this," not no. And I think until that culture changes, our kids are going to suffer, and I don't think that's right or fair, or maybe more importantly, legally. So I guess we're just asking that everyone be treated fairly. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Dana Golden.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dana Golden, and I have three children in the Williamsville Schools, one at Maple East, one at Transit, and one is a freshman at Williamsville East. My maiden name is Schmelzer, and I'm a proud graduate of Williamsville East, class of '84. Four years ago, I convinced my husband to move to Buffalo to be closer to family and for the kids to attend Williamsville Schools. With Williamsville consistently being ranked as one of the best school districts in New York State, I felt we were confident in making this move for our family. The concern I would like to address today was the decision to remove class rank from the Williamsville School District at last month's meeting. For full disclosure, this is my first board meeting, I'm a little nervous. I'm a working mom, and my husband handles the homework and all the teacher meetings at school. I read the WITS emails religiously, do not recall receiving a survey or information about this topic of removing class rank. I felt completely blindsided when I heard it, without input from all of the parents. I went back and I watched the last two meetings on YouTube and the issues presented. I could not find a copy of the presentation with the information that you had that supported removing rank. And I have serious objections to the methodology that was presented in the meetings. Stories of a student not being accepted to UCLA because of rank, I don't remember the exact number, 700 surveys went out, or 900, I don't remember the number, but some of those going to students, 30% of the parents objected to student rank being removed. In the follow-up meeting, the fact that SUNY schools were the only schools researched regarding school rank procedures seemed flawed to me because aren't our kids, by definition, living in New York State, going to have an easier time getting into SUNY schools? I pulled my own research from U.S. News World and Report website and the College Board websites, and I looked at the top 100 nationally-ranked schools in the country. Only 18 of the top 100 schools reported that class rank was not a factor in applications. 23 of them said class rank was considered, 17 said it was important, and 42 schools said that class rank was very important. These are all top 100 national schools. In summary, 59% felt that class rank was important or very important. And these are schools, you know, the obvious ones, Princeton, Yale, Penn, but when you look at the bottom 50, schools like Villanova, Ohio State, UConn, Syracuse, even UB said that class rank was an important factor, schools that, you know, I'd love to have my kids go to. So in conclusion, is it too late to reopen this issue? I was a student athlete in high school, and I pushed myself to achieve good grades. I believe I'm successful today from that experience, and I want to ensure that we are not creating hurdles for our kids to apply to college in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Francie Marzak.
I am on the other side of the fence on class rank. I actually want to applaud the board for making this decision and to be so early in our community, and all the rest of the schools are watching us, and I think that's amazing. My question actually is, why the slow phase-in? Each parent and student that I talk to don't seem to really understand what the class rank means, and so I want to know what information can go out to the students and the parents to inform them of what this really means for our students and how valuable it is. I know that there was information on the Board of Education meetings, and that might be available, but I think more people need to know why this decision was made, and I'm definitely for it. I also want to understand what the logic was in choosing to delay the class rank implementation for the three highest high school grade level classes. I also want to know what the pros are for the sophomores to be grouped and be the last group to have to endure the class rank that you so needed, or felt needed, to be removed. And my last question is, what am I supposed to say to my kids? What am I supposed to tell them why they're the last ones that have to deal with this class rank? So again, I applaud you for making this decision. I just wish the phase-in wasn't so delayed. I think if it was something that you all feel is important, then we should have it available for everyone, not a three-year delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Catherine Schaefer.
My name is Catherine Schaefer, and I have a 10-year-old daughter who attends Transit Middle 5th grade. On Wednesday, October the 4th, my daughter came home from school and struggled to repeat to me the words that were on a sign posted outside the Transit Middle Library. And it said something like this, "We welcome all gay, lesbian, transgender, and bisexual students. This is a safe place." My daughter expressed to me that that sign made her uncomfortable. On Thursday, October 5th, I spoke to Mr. Whitney Abbott, her guidance counselor, and I expressed our concerns. A sign that is designated specifically for one group of students. Aren't all students welcome and safe at school? Do we need to post a sign for various races, creeds, and specifically point them out that they are the ones that are welcome and safe? Asians, Muslims, the Jewish community, Christians, boys only or girls only? But most importantly, the verbiage, the vocabulary. My 10-year-old daughter does not know what gay, lesbian, transgender, or bisexual means, nor is she ready to know that definition. And why should my hand be forced to give her the definition of these words when she and I are not ready? I have been put in a very difficult and uncomfortable position. On Friday, October the 6th, the Transit Middle Librarian, Ms. Passit, called me. I expressed my concerns and even offered some compromises and suggestions. For example, hang a sign that accompanies all students that are welcome and safe. Form a club that says LGTB Community with the colored rainbows or colored bears, or hang a sign in the guidance office with the flag that is most common symbol for the LGTB community. I told Ms. Passit that I was not ready to discuss gay and lesbian terminology with my daughter. She offered to have that conversation with my daughter, and I told her, "No, that's not appropriate." But at the end of that conversation, she considered moving the sign. Since then, I have spoken to Mr. Wall, the Transit Middle Principal, and we have emailed as well regarding a compromise or resolution to my concern. To my knowledge, the sign is still up and posted in front of the library. Let's be clear, I get that times are changing. My boys are 18 and 22 and graduated from Transit Middle, and there were no signs for this back then. I don't care about the initials or a club or a poster with rainbows and bears. I just want the words gone. Gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual, not posted for my 10-year-old daughter or any other 10-year-old little girl to see and feel uncomfortable. But by ignoring her feelings, you are telling her what? Don't tell, don't speak? We don't care that the word bisexual makes you feel uncomfortable? So please, as a parent, please help do what's right for all students, make my daughter feel comfortable, and that her fears and concerns are heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Sheila Burr.
Good evening. My son is a student attending the Dodge Elementary 15-1 program. He has been in this program since kindergarten. Tonight, I'm presenting my concerns about the lack of appropriate programming for my son and other similar situations to children in the district. My son struggles immensely to gain age-appropriate academic skills. There are multiple reasons for this that I will not go into tonight. Be clear, he can learn if provided the appropriate specialized instruction. I have seen my son struggle to make academic growth over the last couple of years. I still really don't know all the reasons why, nor do I have a good understanding what is being done to help my son learn or how I can support him in that learning process. What I do know is that despite my son's learning challenges and the need for specialized instruction, the district repeatedly keeps trying to move him towards the general education setting. This is despite his delayed academic skills. I have been told repeatedly that my son is pretty much on par socially and that he is of average intelligence. He can learn, and that I have to move him towards general education setting because this is where he would be placed after 2nd grade when the district's 15-1 expires. I have asked how he will be expected to continue to learn at all if he's in a larger classroom placement where the children are so far ahead of him academically. I've never received answers to this question. I have been told that my son will struggle to learn in every environment, so nothing will change no matter what placement he has. This is unacceptable. There is no middle ground in the district for my son, especially after 2nd grade, but there should be. My son, like the children of the other parents we have heard from tonight, deserve to receive educational services that are individualized to him, services that will allow him to learn. My son's placements and services should be what he needs and not what is available. I, like the other parents in our group, would be glad to share more about our struggles obtaining appropriate educational services for our children in the district. I invite the board to meet with us and work collaboratively to serve all the students in the district, including children with disabilities like my son. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public expression for this evening. Thank you very much for all of your comments.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and addendums as presented? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Van Scis, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
At this time, I'd like to call forward one of our newest administrators, who's just approved by the board, and that's our instructional specialist for data and accountability and CIO, Judy Dean. Judy, welcome.[1742.41][1742.41](applause)
Thank you so much. I am deeply honored to be here and very grateful for this appointment, and I look forward to working together to create systems around data that support the mission of having all students, all learning supportive, and all students reaching their fullest potential. Thank you.[1768.87][1768.87](applause)
And next, we have our new coordinator of special education, Mr. John D'Angelo.[1778.81][1778.81](applause)
Thank you all, and good evening. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Marslov, as well as Dr. Siri as well, and members of the community. and members of the community for this fantastic opportunity. I'm thrilled to be a member of the Williamsville School District in this capacity. As someone who is a community member myself, whose children attend the school, what a unique opportunity I do have to certainly support the great programming we have and also affect change when needed. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to hitting the ground running.
I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Patricia Brown, Forest Elementary, part-time teacher aide for the 20 years of service. Jennifer Moore, South High School, part-time food service helper for 11 years of service. And Kathy Regal, South High School Food Service Helper for 25 years of service. And Carol Root, Dodge Elementary, part-time teacher aide for 26 years of service. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on September the 12th, 2017? Dr. McClary, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? To the minutes? Minutes? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 602. Dr. Marchloff, would you like to introduce the external auditor, please?
At this time, I'd like to call forward Mr. Luke Mulleki from Dreschler-Mulleki, our external auditors who will be sharing some information with the board. Welcome.
Thank you. As Dr. Marchloff said, my name is Luke Mulleki. I was the engagement partner on your external audit. We released your financial statements last week. You should have the financial statement package in front of you, as well as a brief presentation that I'll go over tonight summarizing the financial statements. I did meet with the audit committee previous to this meeting at length discussing the results of the audit, and them acting as the liaison between the external auditors and the board were informed on all of the key elements of the audit. The first slide presents the products of our audit. Foremost, you engage our services to supply an opinion on your basic financial statements. This year, that opinion is considered to be an unmodified opinion. In other words, we feel that the tests of our audit have, give reason to believe that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. In other words, they're, they're a clean audit. The reason that you need an external audit is for the stakeholders outside of the school district to review the financial statements and rely on the data. That would include the state and federal governments whom, which the district receives aid, as well as the bondholders that hold bonds of the district, and of course, the taxpayers. Additionally, you receive three other items. The first item on the list there is the management letter. Any sort of observations that come to our attention during our audit is presented in the management letter of an area for improvement. This year, we noted a couple of items within the extra classroom with regards to cash receipts and also the inactive, certain funds that appear to be inactive that maybe want to be reviewed on a regular basis. The next bullet is the auditor communications letter. I did mention that I had met with the audit committee previous to the meeting. That letter formalizes that discussion of key assumptions that we discussed throughout the audit. And then finally, we present an extra, extra classroom activity report which summarizes the, some 150 programs that are student-run throughout the district and contain about $1.2 million of activity. On the next slide, you'll see briefly the five-year trends of the district. Last year, revenues of the district were $175 million. This is an increase of $4.3 million from last year. The main increase of this, of the, from one year to the next is resulting from increase in state aid. The district received about $2.6 million of additional state aid. On the expenditure side of things, expenditures also increased the end of the year at $179 million, which is up $10 million from last year. A bulk of that increase is because of a board-approved transfer of the capital projects reserve of about $6 million that didn't occur last year. The remaining increase was largely a result of instructional salaries, which were from a retirement incentive paid out during the year, as well as some regular step increases. The results of some increase, about $1 million increase in special education costs, and $612 was spent from the transportation reserve for the purchase of buses. Expenditures were under the amended budget, particularly in instruction, employee benefits, and central services. Instruction salaries didn't come into the full budgeted amount. Central services was largely because of the utilities and less maintenance costs during the year. And then benefits, TRS, Teachers Retirement System and Employee Retirement System invoices came in a little less than expected, as did health insurance. This reduction in expected expenditures allowed the district to pay down about $7.5 million of their bands via a transfer from the General Fund of the Capital Projects Fund, and also, excuse me, and also created a slight decline in fund balance by $3.7 million as opposed to the decrease of $8 million that was originally proposed with the budget. The next slide shows your total fund balances at the end of the year, which reached about $76.6 million. The top portion, the red portion in your slides, is about $50.4 million, which is considered restricted, comprised of non-spendable fund balance or restricted fund balances. Your restricted, your restriction fund balances are outlined in page 42 of your financial statements, the end of the year at about $48 million, which is down slightly by about $4.4 from last year, indicating a use of the reserves, most of which was included in that capital project reserve that I mentioned was transferred $6 million. That was also replenished by about $3 million, so the net effect was close to $2.5 million of a decrease in the capital projects reserve. Additionally, the district used about $800,000 of the employee benefits reserved, $1 million of the retirement reserved, and as I said, some of the transportation reserve to help offset the current levies. The bottom portion, the blue portion, is what we would consider to be unrestricted. That's at about $16.2 million, and that is broken down further on the subsequent slide into two components. The top portion in this, $8.7 million, represents money that is appropriated for next year's budget in the form of four point, excuse me, $5.4 million that was approved with the budget, the difference between your appropriations and your estimated revenues. In other words, a use of savings to help balance the budget. And then also a $3.3 million of carryovers, which we refer to as encumbrances. The remaining portion, $7.4 million, is what is subject to the Real Property Tax Law 1318, which is also referred to as the 4% rule, and your compliance with such a rule is displayed on page 5 of the financial, of the presentation, indicating that you're at $7.4 million, which is at the 4% level. We had no federal award findings. We tested the school lunch program. We also had no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to note. We talked about a few minor housekeeping items that Mr. Matursky could work through during the year, and he intends to do such. Already has put the plan in motion. It's a pleasure working with the district. As always, we can, we get the full support of any staff that we, we speak of during the audit, and it's a pleasure being out here. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions now. If not, I did put my contact information and the senior manager on the job, his information there, we'd be happy to address any comments at a future date. Thank you.
I don't know if this is a question that's best addressed by the auditor or Mr. Matursky, so I'll just throw it out there. What penalties would exist if we were to exceed the 4% rule on the, on the fund balances? Just, just out of curiosity, in an age where we may be seeing decreased revenue from the federal government, just curious about that?
For the purposes of the external audit, it would be a compliance finding. Further than that, it would be subject to state scrutiny, and that's about the extent that I've seen, is that you'd get subject to criticism and they would write you nasty letters and such.
Thanks.
I don't know. Do you have anything else? No?
I kind of thought we got those nasty letters anyway for holding a 4% balance, at least as far as I remember.
No, we're good with that. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to accept the report of this examination of the district's financial statements prepared by Drescher and Meleki, independent auditors for the fiscal school year beginning on July 1st, 2016, and ending on June 30th, 2017, as just presented? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, 2nd. Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marchloff, would you like to introduce the claims audit presentation, please?
Yes, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matursky to invite the claims auditor to come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Marchloff. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Joe Kleimack of the audit firm of EFPR Group. They complete the claims audit process on all the district's accounts payable claims every second week.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, board. I'm Joe Kleimack with the EFPR Group, graduating from Williamsburg North in 1974, so I had a very good education. I want to thank the board for its, its good oversight over the finances of the organization, as was just demonstrated by report of the external auditors. And to answer your question regarding the 4%, basically, you'll get a nasty letter, and sometimes the state may intend to hold back some state aid if you don't make the 4%. But I've had, in my experience, I've not seen that happen. It's too political for them to do that, so. For, for the year ended June 30th, 2017, my claims auditors were out there every two weeks, and we looked at two type of payments. Payments before they were signed and ready to go out to, and warrants for, before the board approved of 8,731 claims for almost $74 million. We noted seminars and, out of the 8,731, very, very small, a .08 percentage. That indicates very, very good, strong controls over your disbursement process. There also was a new program that the Business Office instituted this year. It's called the Supplier Pay Program of M&amp;T Bank. We also looked at those disbursements. Those are electronically filed when the vendors approve the, the email that gets sent. Those are all, we also audit all those before that's allowed to go. So all those are on and approved and part of our process. There's also a post-payment review of, of funds, of checks that are written, and we look at them afterwards. We looked at 1,672 of those, about $48 million, and we had no exceptions at any of those at all. And one of our things we do quarterly is to review the district's internal control for its credit card purchases, and reported that the internal controls over these type of disbursements are working accordingly to the district's credit card purchase policies. Any questions there?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to adopt the 2018-2019 budget development process timeline calendar as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The board has received the tax surcery cases for the 2017-2018 year. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I know I will comment. I do every year. I am absolutely continuously appalled at some of these requests. I believe there was a few businesses that were requesting 90% of devaluation, and looking at their locations and where they are, it just seems crazy that they're worth less than $1 million now. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to acknowledge the Town of Amherst Lead Agency State Environment Quality Review Act determination for the proposed project, which includes 520 Campbell Boulevard, Amherst, New York, as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, 2nd. Mrs. Leatherbarrow. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries 701. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the sale of the district property at 520 Campbell Boulevard, Amherst, New York, and sign the contract with Seminale Muir Woods Associates LLC for $220,000 as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, 2nd. Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 701. Mrs. Vasquez and I attended the new field opening ceremony at South High School on Friday, September the 15th. And Mrs. Beeger, Mr. Mecca, Mr. Meyer, and I attended the new field opening ceremony at East High School Friday, September the 22nd. Both events were very well attended by the community. Dr. McClary, Mr. Mecca, and I attended the Erie County Association of School Board Leadership Dinner on October the 5th at the Millennium Hotel. A report was included in your packet. The Fall Legislation Forum is next Thursday at Erie One Boses, and I plan to attend it. Mr. Mecca, do you have anything to report on the legislative and budget and finance meetings that you've recently attended?
Not really anything of too much interest. We set a timetable to set forward the process of coming up with a budget for the Erie County Association of School Boards. Tomorrow night, no, yeah, Thursday night, sorry. Thursday night, I'll be attending a second legislative meeting of the year, and I expect things to heat up a little bit. There was some discussion at the last one about charter schools and how they impact on the funding of public schools, especially those first-ranked suburbs that are most affected, like Chictawaga and Tonawanda and Buffalo City, of course. That's, that's about it at this point in time. We, there's a new, a new director of the Erie County Association of School Boards, former superintendent Lockport. I'm going to need help with his name if anybody's got it down their tip of their tongue.
Frazier.
Dr. Bruce Frazier, right?
Yes.
Thank you. I've heard really awesome things about him and had the chance to meet him with, with Dr. McClary and President Lemay. He seems like a great guy, and I've heard excellent things about his savvy for legislative issues, and he seems to be coming in with some really strong ideas. The other thing I'd like to report is that we, the Erie County Association of School Boards does have a certain amount of money that they can give to school board members that are going to Albany to lobby. I'd have to get the details on how we would access that funding, but there is some funding available in that respect so that our Board of Education wouldn't have to pay for that out of our own pockets. So if there's general interest in that, I can try to find out more. Seems like by the head nods, yeah, if that's the case?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mecca. Yes, I had the opportunity to spend a lot more time this past weekend at the NISBA Convention with Dr. Frazier. He started, I believe it was October 1st was when he officially started. Very, very good intellectual man. Does anyone else have anything else to report from the Erie County Association of School Boards? Nope? Okay. Mr. Meyer and myself attended the 98th Annual Convention this past weekend in Lake Placid for the New York State School Board Association. I've tried to keep you all informed in my very verbose emails. Any questions or anything, please let me know. I was also registered to attend the pre-law conference seminar. I sent email summaries of that. I did try and email out presentations on that, and I do have a, one extra copy of the entire slide deck in printed form, if anybody would like it. First come, first served. This was an extremely beneficial law conference. This does not compare to the law conference that we attended in August, the last couple of years. This was much more in-depth. You know, just a very quick summary of why it was so beneficial is they took various subject matters, you know, and put a panel of four people up there to discuss and really give opposing views as to why this, this opinion, for example, the changes in the federal education system and what it's going to mean. So they had two people from Trump's administration transition team and one currently on Trump's team discuss the pros and the cons of why they made the changes that they were going for, and then we had some people at the state level and then other national organizations and an attorney that were there that were giving opposing views to this as well and what it means to education. So it was a very, very good beneficial law conference, and I encourage you all next year. I know it's in New York City. So, it was a very, very good beneficial law conference, and I encourage you all next year. I know it's in New York City. I do know rooms are more plentiful there, but I know they go quick, so we have to book early. But if you can and it's in the budget, please try to attend this law conference. We want to get the word out and remind everyone to mark your calendars for the First Community Forum this year. Parents, students, staff, and local community members are encouraged to attend and have a two-way conversation with the Board. This First Community Forum will be set on Saturday, November the 18th, at 9:00 a.m. until noon, and the location will be at East High School. Hopefully, everybody can attend. The First Board Retreat this year will be held in the district office here in this boardroom on November the 4th. The Board leadership and Dr. Marsloff met with our facilitator, Carl Kristoff, on September the 29th and came up with an agenda. Would everyone please confirm that you are still able to attend? A nod's great. That'll work for me. Thank you. The Williamsville Education Foundation will host the Wall of Fame Breakfast Friday, October the 27th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Park Country Club. Former Board President Ronald Schubert will be one of the honorees. The Education Foundation sponsors and asks for Board support for this fundraising event that occurs only every two years. All Board members received an invitation. Can I please see a show of hands of those who are planning on attending? Mrs. Vasquez, thank you. Anybody else that can attend? It's the 27th at 8:00 a.m. Again, this is a fundraising event. It's only every other year, biennial. I know, I know. Okay. If anybody else can attend, please let the district clerk know. And RSVP. I think it's late for the RSVP, but I'm sure we could probably still squeeze you in. The First Board Visitation is coming up this Thursday, October the 19th, 8:00 a.m. at the AIM Facilities next door. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and I have committed to attending. There are two more visitations prior to our next board meeting. They are Thursday, November the 2nd, at 8:00 a.m. Yes, that is a Thursday, at Maple West with Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and I committed to attend. The next one on Monday, November the 13th. Yes, again, this is a Monday. This is at 7:00 a.m. This will be at South High School. Mrs. Beeger, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and I have all committed to attend as well. Is anyone else available for any of these three school visits? Dr. Marsloff, would you like to give your community update, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. First of all, I had an opportunity to attend our grand openings at South High School and East High School for our new athletic field complexes. I want to again thank everyone who was involved in the formulation of the plan for these facilities for our students. Thank you for all the support from our community. It was critically important to making this become a reality. And thank you to everyone that took part. It was a wonderful evening at both schools, a great opportunity to get together with fellow community members and parents and students. And I think everybody had a great time and really celebrated the success. I'd also like to make mention that recently I had an opportunity to take part in a golf tournament for making strides against breast cancer. It was a wonderful opportunity to spend time with fellow administrators, teachers, and staff members. Almost 100 people took part across the district, and we raised significant money for that important charity. And I want to thank all of those who spearheaded the efforts to organize the event, including the leader of organizing it, Mrs. Nora Bender, who's a physical education teacher at Mill Middle School. All of the teachers that organized the event did a terrific job. It was a wonderful opportunity, not just to engage in playing some golf, but also to have a chance to talk with people and chat with people about things going on in the district and things that we can work on and work on together and do better. So, all in all, it was a wonderful opportunity to spend an afternoon until the rain hit. It felt like a hurricane. We made it through about 11 holes, but that's 11 more holes than I played in the last six years. So, you take what you can get and enjoy it, and it certainly was a great opportunity for a great cause. So, that concludes my community update for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Lemay.
Thank you. Someone like to move to take the new and revised policies from the table for a second reading and adoption, please? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Eager? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move the second reading and adoption of the following policies? New policy 3115, Website Accessibility, and revised policies 7222, Diploma and Credential Options for Students with Disabilities, 7240, Student Records, Access and Challenge, 7530, Child Abuse and Maltreatment, 7670, Impartial Due Process Hearing, Selection of Impartial Hearing Officers. Someone make a motion? No. Thank you very much, Mrs. Van Seis. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to move the first reading to Delete Policy 1340, Board Staff Communications? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, a second. Dr. Vannater, any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Beeger.
I just wanted to make a comment about this. We've been talking about this policy and just trying to improve communications in general throughout different district parties. This one particularly referring to Board Staff Communications. And we've done some work about trying to put words on this, and I'm pleased to see the thought of deleting it because I think we're all really working together in a positive way to follow chain of command with communications, but also to have open, friendly communication. And some of the wording in this policy, it just makes it structured and negative in ways that I don't think encourage that kind of open communication and good relations that we're really working towards. So, I'm pleased to see this here.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Would someone like to move to table the motion for a second reading and adoption at the November 14th, 2017, regular board meeting, please? Mrs. Van Seis, second. Dr. Vannater, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. If you have any liaison or conference reports, please pass them to Mrs. Seraphin. Please send your reports within two days of a meeting, if possible. There's still a couple of outstanding reports for September, so please get them in order and get them in in the next few days. Remember, you can file these electronically through WITS or fill out the forms provided to you earlier this year and fax them in. Does anyone need coverage for any of the upcoming meetings? Mr. Mecca?
Perhaps. On Thursday, I have two meetings that are overlapping, and there's no travel time, so that I can't fill them both at the same time. I mean, I can cover the legislative for half an hour and book out to Maple West, or I can cut Maple West short, although I probably prefer not to cut our district. Unless somebody wants to cover one of the two, I don't know. What do you guys think?
What are the times of both? Is 1:06 to 7:00, 1:07 to 8:00?
You got it.
I had that same problem last year for every single Boces meeting that I had. I just, I think it was high middle, if I'm not mistaken. I just let them know I was going to be 15 minutes late. And they were fine with that.
Yeah, I figured that's what I was going to do, but I just thought I'd throw it out there in case anybody had a burning desire to attend a meeting tomorrow night, so.
Anybody? I would. I apologize, but my daughter has a varsity playoff game at 6 o'clock that night.
No problem.
If anybody can, please email Mr. Mecca offline. Appreciate it. Any other coverage requests? Nope. Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone wants to discuss? Nope. Okay. Dr. Marsloff, would you like to introduce the Student Achievement Outcomes Presentation, please?
Sure. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Marie Balin, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, to share information with the Board of Education and our community on our academic performance during the school year 2016-17. Dr. Balin?
Thank you, Dr. Marsloff, and thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to present the information this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge those who contributed to the development of what you're going to see before you tonight. These include Mrs. Gail Militello, our Instructional Specialist for K-12 ELA and Reading; Dr. Chris McGinnley, Instructional Specialist for K-12 Math; Ms. Diane Cordes, our Instructional Specialist for Accountability and Data Reporting, CIO; Mrs. Karen Greco, Instructional Specialist for Libraries, ENL, and Social Studies; Mr. Tom Byrd, Instructional Specialist for Science and Engineering and Technology Education, as well as Dr. Siri for her input as well. As you're aware, and we all know, it's important to continue to keep in mind that no one assessment comprises a student's educational experience or the entirety of ways in which student performance or progress is measured. Our teachers have developed relationships with students. They garner valuable information each and every day throughout many aspects, their daily observations, their formative and diagnostic and benchmark assessments, anecdotal information, and student learning is assessed in a variety of formats, including performance-based projects digitally and paper and pencil. It's also significant to acknowledge that one or few measures do not tell a complete story with regard to student strengths or even areas of emphasis. With all this been said, we also want to acknowledge that we use any and all quantitative information as well as qualitative information available to support our students in receiving the best education possible. To start us off and just to frame our discussion a little bit, we like to present some of our district facts. There's a couple of these that I would like to point out to you this evening. English language learners, as you can see on the screen, as identified as limited English proficient. Our percentage of students in this particular category has grown significantly actually over the last few years. If we look back at our data and even this very same slide and presentations that we've done from one year to the next, if we rewind back to the 15-16 school year, at that time, we had, just to give you a raw number, 222 Ls in 16-17. I shared with you that there were 337 Ls, and as of this school year, there are 434 Ls. Beginning in the 15-16 school year, although not considered part of the district L population, we have been called and mandated to serve those at the commanding level. This is the highest level of proficiency. These students receive services for a two-year period, and they are not reflected in the raw numbers, but we do provide services to them. If we were to really dig deeply into each one, I think we've seen growth in the area of free and reduced launch, and we have certainly provided supports to not only our students, but also our staff members as student challenges arise, and we want to meet the needs of all students in our district. Just to start us off, and the way that this presentation is formatted, it starts with the big picture first, and we start first at the elementary and middle levels and then moving into the high school. In this particular instance, when we're looking at elementary and middle school, the state testing that's reflected there is 3-8 ELA in math and 4-8 science. We start again with the largest picture there being New York State, then Erie County, our low and average needs districts, which I'll define for us in a few moments, our district outcomes, school outcomes, and also grade level results. As I shared with you last year, as far as the 3rd through 8th grade ELA and math assessments were concerned, we saw at that time, for the third time in 10 years, that there were changes to the assessments that were fairly significant. This year, as articulated by the State Education Department, they reported that no significant changes were made to the test construct. However, it's important to note that in the area of testing accommodations, changes were made to allowable testing accommodation time. In terms of our district accountability, what you see here is reflective of accountability reports that are provided to us by New York State. In this case, what you see are enrollments as of Bed's Day for ELA and math, broken out by all of our students and then also our students with disabilities. And in that percentage tested column, I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that in this case, the converse of that, which is the non-tested category, actually comprises six categories: student refusals, medically excused, administrative errors, non-viable scores, incomplete assessments, or no assessments. Just to keep in mind, these figures that I'm referring to do not represent and do not mirror the accounting or record-keeping that we do locally when it comes to exam administration or makeup test period of those students who are not participating in our assessments. At that time, those figures are reported by each school as a single day, day-to-day count, and then ultimately, we take the average of the number of students who are present on the testing days and may refuse one or more days of the assessment. So, if you were to compare these numbers to those, they do not mirror one another. So, starting again with the 3-8 view and looking at New York State, in terms of comparison statewide, Williamsville continues to outperform New York State at every grade level. Our overall percentages of proficiency remain fairly stable when compared to last year. And as you can see on the screen here, there's still quite a remarkable difference between the state average and ours here in Williamsville when it comes to ELA and math, levels 3 and 4, which are the highest levels of proficiency. Keep in mind, and this is true as we go through the presentation, the figure for math that I'll reference several times over will not include our 8th grade students who are enrolled in Algebra I and take the Algebra I Regents Exam. They are not double-tested, so they do not take the Grade 8 math exam. So, going on sort of to the level of next analysis, which is our Erie County rankings, you see some figures before you in and of themselves. They don't tell, again, a complete story. I want to give you a little bit of a context about the rankings themselves. And when we look at, as we do, and we look very closely to see how we fare, in this case, compared to the 28 districts within Erie County, the districts are comprised of districts of all sizes. Large testing groups like ours, which, you know, in some cases at certain grade levels are in the 3-4s and 500s, to smaller grade levels and groupings like Eden, which has 50-some students within their grouping. So, these rankings, it's a bit misleading because what you don't get to see behind the scenes is a listing of all of those. But just to peel back a few of the layers and give you some sense, when you look at ELA Grade III, and this was a significant area, which we saw an increase where we rose in the rankings. But if we look at ours, which, again, according to our chart here, we are third overall in Erie County. The two districts ahead of us happen to be Alden and Clarence, Alden with a grouping of 77 students who were tested, and Clarence with 240. Ours happened to be 590. So, there's quite a range. So, when we're looking at these, it's not enough just to look at the number you see before you. We really look to see who else is among us, above, below, and otherwise. And you do tend to see from one year to the next, especially if you look over the last several years, not just the last two years, some difference in the rankings. Sometimes you jump one behind, you jump one ahead. In math, what we tended to see for this year, if we were to look last year to this year, that we actually gained in all of our grade levels except two where we remained stable. So, we look at this in a variety of different ways. Again, by itself, it doesn't have a lot of meaning behind it. What we will really see as we proceed through the presentation, and certainly as we get to the last slide, the most meaningful view that you have of anything is when you're looking at student-specific outcomes. This is not about individual students. Certainly, we wouldn't share that kind of information publicly. But when the schools are utilizing this, they start first with that large picture of New York State, drill down at every level, as I'm going to walk you through this evening. And in addition, they also look at each student, and not just this assessment, but any information they have at their disposal. We saw a couple of nuanced components that, of course, led to a few questions. And one of these you'll see is we show some of the grade level results, Grade VI. Again, not really with a full explanation behind it, but a phenomenon that happened here is we saw a little bit of movement in a backwards direction there. But when we looked at New York State, Erie County, and every level of analysis, large or small, 6th grade math seemed to present an issue for all. We're trying to dig into exactly what caused that. Was there something in the test itself? Kind of suggests that. It's fairly unusual to have every grade level, the state, and every level of analysis here lead to the same conclusion, which is it went backwards. So, we are trying to ask ourselves those kinds of questions because, again, it's not sufficient enough to see a result without trying to understand the reasons behind why something is occurring. And some explanations are a little harder to get at than others, but that is one that we are certainly analyzing. Moving on in our presentation, just to give you the next level of analysis, which is our grade level outcomes here. Again, what we saw in most cases with some outliers, as I just explained a few moments ago, is fairly is fairly stable, what I would consider stable results across our grade levels. There were a couple of areas that I'd like to draw your attention to. One being the eighth grade math, again, it seems to jump out on the screen when you look at that number in and of itself compared to the other numbers that are there. Again, the reason for this is because we're not testing our students with this particular test. Most of our students are in algebra, so the number you see before you is, again, out of context a bit because the other grade levels do not do that. We have students accelerated in science, however, they are tested in both. So math provides a little bit of an outlier here. About 30% of our students have already moved on to advanced courses at this point. So that number, we can't take it to mean that there's not performance or it's not adequate. It's really just, again, the metrics behind it. We did see some really nice gains at several grade levels. I just want to note a couple for you, if you were to look last year to this year. ELA, there was a gain of six at grade three and a gain of four at grade seven. And math, I want to draw your attention to those because, again, really nice, especially at the elementary level, some nice gains when it came to our math achievement, especially at grade four. You probably remember, and you'll hear a little bit in a few minutes, about some school-specific results, but the fifth grade piece being our transition year here, unlike in other districts where it might be a different grade level is one that we continue to work on, and we're seeing some nice results of that. One of the things we also like to do is look cohort to cohorts, and not just subject area in sort of a vertical fashion, but also how are the third graders doing in ELA and math? Those are the same students essentially who are being tested. And then also, how are they doing on their other measures? Do, what do their Lexile levels look like? What does their fast bridge result look like? What are teachers seeing in the classroom? How are their interventions being handled? So it's really trying to develop, not just with this lone piece of information, but with all of what we have at our disposal, a full picture of the students. Now we get into a format that you'll see across the next several slides, and just so you're aware of how this is formatted. What you see here, for example, is both the LA and math at the elementary level, grades three and four, the level of proficiency, levels three and four. The blue band across the screen in the middle is our district percentage of attainment of proficiency, and down at the bottom, you have two categories that I wanted to draw your attention to. One is the average needs districts, and the other is the low needs districts. The reason why those are significant, and those relate back to New York State labels based on district wealth ratios, we happen to fall into the average needs districts. If you look across those numbers and what you'll see on the next couple of screens, we outperform all of the districts in the average needs, and that's been pretty significant from one year to the next. So we tend to base some of our comparisons on the low needs districts. That means they have low poverty, low ENL. You know that our district is very diverse, but it gives, again, a correlation of how our district's performing relative to some of their demographics. And what we also see in many cases there is we're outperforming many of the low needs districts too, or are on par with those particular districts. In terms of the school-specific results that you see before you, again, I want to draw a couple of things to your attention relative to some of the schools' achievements, and I'm very proud of all of the work that our staff members, our teachers, our principals, our district staff, everybody really works very hard, again, not just towards this, but the full picture of the student, to support students in so many ways, and this is just one way that the outcomes are showing. But for Country Parkway, for example, they had really nice gains in third and fourth grade ELA and third grade math. Dodge had the largest gain in third grade ELA, fourth grade ELA, third grade math, and an increase in fourth grade math, but they were the lone school at this point, really, to show gains across the board, and were some of them in the double digits. So hats off to them. Again, across all of the schools, what we saw is third grade ELA was a great strength across the board, fourth grade ELA, again, very nice gains, and math particularly, I would say in fourth grade, some really nice gains there too. Where we see decreases, again, we try to look at that in context. Was there something with regard to any change that may have brought that on? We didn't happen to see, but in one or two very small instances, something that we would consider to be more significantly and statistically within seven to 10 points of a difference. That's one sort of a question's tendency to raise. If it's within a few, plus or minus three to five, again, we can't draw too much from that because, again, stability is there for the most part. And we had many cases where, you know, it might have been a gain of zero, so they were very stable in their particular and respective grade levels. In this case, moving on to the middle level, what you see here are grades five through eight ELA test results. Again, you see all of our schools listed there for you. Again, similar band, similar color chart here for you. Our gains at fifth grade were pretty noteworthy. Again, being that transition year, and I think I found myself just about for the last, this is the seventh year I think we have done this presentation, is that has presented an ongoing challenge for us. I've spoken to that at this table before, but we're really starting to see the fruits of some of the labor of trying to put some of the changes into place. One of those in math, for example, was a change to the schedule. You had a presentation some time ago from the middle school principals and myself with regard to some of the instructional shifts that were made. While it was not done for testing specifically, there was not sufficient time to cover the curriculum. So that's always going to have an impact on student learning, whether it results in something like this or otherwise, but certainly time on task and being able to teach the standard sufficiently is a real concern if that presents itself. So that was one of the things that certainly was a concern over time. And just the transition year being the fifth grade year for us was always something that we were looking at. In this case, we saw at fifth grade with ELA, really some pretty significant jumps. One I'd like to note for you is Mill with a difference of 17 as an increase. So that, again, while we saw lots of increases across the board, that's a pretty tremendous one, which really and truly, I would give my hats off to the staff there and the principal because they sat down and they said, you know, what do we need to do curricularly speaking? This wasn't about an assessment, it was about their learning, their students, and they really, really put their heads together about the approach. And I thank them because they invited us into the conversations, and we learned a lot from the discussion to benefit all of our programming. So that was a very, very good opportunity. For math, you see the same kind of formatting on the screen. Again, we saw Mill with an increase of 15 again at grade five. So fifth grade was a focus area for many, transit and an increase of 14, and as a district, an increase of 11, 11%. So that's, again, a pretty significant piece. Just to go back to the algebra for a moment, of the 292 students who were enrolled in algebra, we had 100% passing. That's really a significant accomplishment, and over 86% achieved mastery on the test. So very nice results there. What you see before you here in the next couple of slides are grades four and eight science. These are all, also always have been and continue to be success stories for our district. Very high achievement overall. I think that's been the case from one year to the next. There's really not any difference to speak of for this particular year, so I'll leave you to peruse that as you will. We had, just for comparison sake, I spoke a little bit about our math advanced learning. We also have 50% of our eighth grade students who were enrolled in Earth Science and took the Earth Science Regents exam, and in fact, 408 eighth grade students took the New York State grade eight science exam. So in this case, again, there is not, just like there was for math, a waiver to exempt them from one exam, but we had a very high participation rate with Earth Science, so I just wanted to make sure that that was noted in the presentation. What we get into now are our Regents exams, and again, we start with the biggest picture first, which are our district highlights, and then you have a picture of each school that's been presented for you. Again, I think it's, if you were to compare back and have the slides that were presented for the last several years, these are very consistent with the outcomes that we have had from one year to another. And again, I thank our teachers and staff members and our students because they're very committed to excelling, not just in the coursework, but certainly as part of their assessment. One piece I want to note, and this is across all of the slides, both the district and school slides, is that our results on the Common Core ELA at the mastery level was very significant. You will see that on each school slide. So for example, as a district, 96% of our students were scored proficient, but we had 77% score at the mastery level. As you start to look through east, and again, it's in that second bulleted section, north and south, you can see that a very large percentage of students scored at that mastery level, which is defined from 85 to 100. So again, it's not a matter of just passing something or having a minimum requirement in place. We have students who are striving to do their best, and it is showing in some of the results. One of the areas we are working on, and I had conversations as recently as this afternoon with both our instructional specialist as well as a principal is with regard to our chemistry. It gave us a little bit of a challenge this past year. Again, the reasons behind that are not all known at this point. Some of it could be related to the assessment itself, but what's most important is what we're going to do from this point forward. So it's one thing to look at a number and say, okay, you know, how did we get here? What I commend is the actions taken by the staff, and namely, the science teachers, to sit down as a group. They invited our instructional specialist, and the principal was there, and they said, what are some things we could do to align ourselves and our instruction so that we're continuing to meet and exceed the needs of the students? Some of the things I want to draw your attention to that they've committed to doing are things like common planning, common assessments, and common labs. Those are not always easily achievable when you have staff members teaching a variety of courses. So even just time to come together and have conversations around some of those things can present a challenge just because of your schedule, but they have committed themselves to that. We're looking and have offered, if there's anything we can do in the way of any support from our offices on a district level, the Office of Instruction or any professional development that has been also made available to them. So this was noticed immediately by the buildings and our office. The building principals, again, were very responsive. Our instructional specialist has done a tremendous job, and I believe that this commitment will show some results as we move forward. Couple of great highlights, moving beyond our 3-8 and moving beyond our Regents is we also have a number of our students who are taking advanced placement courses and the associated assessments, the AP exams. We, I guess I would rewind back to about seven years ago, really had to look at the philosophy of what we believed in when it came to student assessment in this area, and really even student access to the courses in this area. Our teachers did a tremendous job and have done a tremendous job opening their classrooms, not just to the students who initially believe that this is for them, but anyone who'd like to try this kind of coursework. We will support you, come in, we will work with you, you will be successful here. And our results over the last decade have shown that to be the case. Our participation rate, if you were to look over the last 15 years, has jumped dramatically. It has remained that way. We have about the number of students staying the same at this point relative to last year, but the number of exams taken has increased, and most importantly, the results have stayed stable. They're good results, they're solid results, kids are having great outcomes. I do want to caution, though, this is, again, not a be-all or end-all either. This is one way students can access this level of coursework. It's really the next slide I want to draw your attention to, which are our dual credit and college credit opportunities. We are most fortunate to be able to offer a number of courses in which our students are either enrolled in a dual-credit arrangement, meaning it's one of our district high school courses that is also a college course, so they have access to college course credit in that manner, or they are enrolled directly through a university. So one great example of that is Syracuse University, excuse me, Project Advanced Supa. We have four Supa courses that are offered at our three high schools. When we look across our APs, our dual enrollments and our Supas, we have almost 40 opportunities for students to leave high school with some, either credits in hand or ability to get credit through an AP, for example, when they enter college. So that is tremendous. 18 of them have been added since 2011. So we are lucky that we have been able to partner with colleges and universities. Thank you to Dr. Martslove and the board. We hear from parents, we hear from the kids, we hear from the teachers. It is a win-win for everyone. From a financial perspective, the payment that the parents make for the credits for the students to be enrolled in the course is a fraction, a third, about a third of what you would pay if you were enrolled post-high school. So it is literally almost an ideal opportunity that presents itself. You're engaged in challenging coursework. It's interesting to kids. Kids are coming to these classes because they're interested in the content and the coursework, and they're able to earn college credit at the same time. In the case of the Supa, they walk out with a Syracuse transcript in hand. They are members of the university, so it's quite a great opportunity for kids. Just to give you a sense of our diplomas earned, you see several different percentages here. Our rate averting Regents and even advanced designation is very high. It continues to be. The Regents has actually increased. Our goal is really to increase the advanced designations. We want kids to leave here if that's their path and that's what they've chosen, and really open that door up as much as possible to any students and supporting them to get that advanced designation piece. There's also CTE, Career and Technical Education endorsement, so there's a lot available to kids in the way of what they could leave here with in terms of a diploma. I had shared some information last year relative to students with disabilities. I'd also like to share that with you this year. So of our graduates, 71% of our students with disabilities earned Regents diplomas. Eight of them earned an advanced designation diploma. That's double the year before. So we continue to see some very nice outcomes in terms of our students with disabilities and our Ls. Just to give you a sense, it's nearly 60% of our students, our English language learners are also walking out of our doors with a Regents diploma in hand. So we continue to strive to meet all of the students' needs. They go on to many great things after high school, not just college, but as you can see, employment, the military, some of the plans aren't disclosed, and they are also leaving here, as you can see, with quite a lot of money and scholarships. So that is a great success story for them, and we certainly wish them all of the greatest success as they leave us. So in conclusion, what do we do with all of this? What does it mean? Really, it's the dialogue and the conversation that happens as a result of the outcomes that's most important, the collaboration with the teachers and the administrators to identify student needs based on a multitude of information. We analyze it on a granular level. That's done really at the school level, student by student. What needs are there? What strengths are there? What kind of supports do students need? What refinements do we need to make? For us, district-wide, it's things like structures, programs, and resources to maximize learning. What do we need to do to provide those kinds of supports to students? We continue to have teachers and specialists come to the table to learn from each other, to share with each other. We are so lucky, again, that we are able to do that, so I thank you. You've supported things like our curriculum council recommendations. We have had meetings with staff, we have facilitation sessions with teachers where they come together, it's collaborative conversations among colleagues to develop, refine, and create together. They are very reflective. They discuss many different things, problem solve and share amongst each other. That's really been, I believe, the key to success in moving forward. And again, our professional development, again, the plan that you help us support and continue to implement is key to all of this happening as well. So having opportunities for staff to select from among an array of different professional opportunities that they can engage in to refine and enhance their craft is most important. So most importantly, our focus remains really on that last bullet, on providing the best experience for our children during their education and prepare them for their lives post-high school. So at this point, our presentation is concluded, and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Dr. Van Aner?
Sure. Hi. Excellent presentation, thank you. Just a quick question, going back to AP scores.
Yes.
And the district mean score, the average was, the mean was three point four nine. Do we understand or do we know how that compares? Do we have similar comparisons as we did with other numbers to New York State, Erie County, and then Low Need and Average Need?
We do have them. I did not include them here, but we'd be happy to provide them.
Just a quick ask, just a, thank you.
Mr. Mecca?
It seems, looking at the report, that we have a large percentage of non-tested students. Would that be a fair statement?
There are certainly a portion of non-tested students. The reason I mention the categories is in previous meetings, we've shared, again, those day-to-day counts of students not participating because of refusing. This includes more than that. So some are medically driven, others are due to incomplete assessments. So I would say there is a fair amount, and it's encompassing those various categories.
And then following up on that, what impact do you think that that has on our results? Good or bad, I guess?
You know, it's an interesting question and one that we have tried to approach from a variety of ways. One is anecdotal, so basically asking the teachers and the principals, how do you see that this has had an impact? And then it's really looking at the data. Both these does give us now that they are tracking the information, if you will, a little bit in a more detailed fashion, reports on, and again, it's very much a projection kind of approach that they use, but they try to project the outcomes of, you know, it's these students, should they have taken it, would have gotten this kind of result? Again, that's if there's a past history there. It becomes much more challenging if you're looking at a third grader because there is no past history. The one piece that we look at, and again, it's key to what I spoke about earlier, is what other ways of knowing where students stand do you have? If it's a fast bridge, is it a reading inventory, is it teacher's notes? You have to look at everything available. We have the ability, and thankfully, we have wits, that allows us, from a numeric perspective, to be able to pull in all of those numeric metrics and actually draw comparison that way. And it allows us also to see if the student did participate in the assessment, how that compares to the other assessments that we have, and if they didn't, how the rest of it comes together. So again, there's a little bit of a, there's not an agreement on how to best determine the answer to your question, but there's certainly different ways we've approached that. It's important for us to look at it because again, you know, making assumptions that it's all one type of student or one type of group of student, I don't know that we can say that with a hundred percent certainty. It's really having to look at all of what we have at our disposal and trying to make sense of it from there.
Can I get you to make a guess up?
Yeah. You know, I honestly can't even guess because we just, for this, and again, it's a year behind, so we're looking at last year's results, but we have just pulled in all of those metrics for this year. So we're trying to do that deep analysis that I just spoke of. I don't know that we're going to see the same picture, school per school, or even grade level per grade level, but I couldn't even venture a guess at this point.
Understood.
Mrs. Leatherberg?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you so much for the thoroughness of this presentation.
Thank you.
What I find most valuable isn't the numbers. What I find most valuable is what you have said in between each slide of numbers. And that's the focus on student-specific outcomes using multiple measures. You know, Mark, I think you asked a great question. I'm a parent who has consistently chosen to have my children refuse the state assessments for grades three through eight. And now that they have two that have made it to high school, and their success is what it is, I think if you look at our trends and you look at that last slide of where our students are ending up at graduation and beyond, ninety-two percent going into college, and we have such excellent career and technical programs as well in this district. We are a successful district because of the opportunities that we have, but also the access that our students have to resources, not only at home, but here as well. And as a Buffalo teacher, I think that that has to be said because that equity isn't available to students everywhere. So I applaud our success. I take it all, I take these numbers with a grain of salt because there's such a correlation to finances in the home and access to education. And I think that this district has a reputation where parents choose to enter this district and live here because they're making the commitment to pay a little bit extra more money as an investment in their child's education. So I applaud everything that's happening. I had one question regarding a few of the high school exams. As I mentioned, two kids in high school now, getting older. But there have been some, I remember reading some things in the news past June regarding some questions with the algebra exam. And as an educator, I heard consistent rumblings from my fellow colleagues regarding the chemistry exam as well. So some of these achievement rates, do you think there's a correlation there? I mean, it looked like there was some definite flaws with the algebra exam, if I remember reading that correctly. Can you shed any light on that?
Interestingly enough, I think we have talked a little bit about the algebra exam in the past. A lot of that related to the scaling of the exam. I have heard the chemistry piece brought up, not just recently, this goes back some years, about that particular exam and the scale being quote-unquote tougher. That's the perception.
Right.
This was a nuanced piece for us. It's always a bit lower, but not, you know, so that's why we're leading ourselves to say, you know, what was it, the exam? I mean, our students have performed well from one year to the next. So again, I find myself repeating that because that's been our history. So I think those questions you ask are very important. We ask those too, but we also look at every other factor. That's why I mentioned some of the constructs, our meetings. What structures do we have in place? What supports do we have in place? I think we've heard some things over the years about both algebra and chemistry. My hope is, and I know, you know, again, I've said this before at this table, is the more the teachers are involved in the processes, that's why any opportunities we have, if we're called to item write or beyond a committee, any state-level participation, I think is most critical. It's the teachers who know this content, they know the students, they know what is appropriate, and they know the instruction and curriculum inside and out. So I think we try to be as reflective as possible, but at the same time, we have to also work with what we have. Testing is not a perfect science. It's very difficult, and I know many of you have had the experience of item writing. It is not easy. In fact, during many of the tests, it's not unusual for us to get some kind of memo or update from state odd saying that there's a mistake or an update or something of that nature. So I think we try to work with what we have, we try to get involved, and we try to see what may be causing, again, it's correlational at best because I don't think we can point to any one piece in particular. But I have heard historically about the chemistry in particular being a very challenging scale and harder to attain mastery. I think with the algebra, that seems to be less of a comment in more recent years, but I think that's because we heard it several years ago. So my hope is that was responded to at a state level. I think it'll be interesting to see what happens with the chemistry. And I even mentioned the sixth grade math test because that is a phenomenon, honestly, I don't remember seeing where it's a backward slide all the way around, not just here. It's strange. So I think it leads to larger questions and it leads to far beyond just how students did. So my hope is that the more educators are involved in these processes, we certainly do it here, but on a state level, it's only going to benefit the larger picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, the chemistry, my own daughter suffered from that. She slipped backwards on that, which was kind of depressing, I guess, in a way to penalize the student that does well, to actually let them score less. I believe it was this presentation last year or another one where we were asking for post-graduate results and how are students replacing, that sort of stuff. And I went actually into the NISBA conference this year, onto the show floor where there was two hundred vendors specifically looking, because I know we had talked about doing surveys and stuff like that, which I guess resources, stuff like that, it's difficult to keep track of these students. Ironically, one vendor on the floor does something like this. I'm not endorsing them, but I wanted to let you know that this exists. They do surveys their senior year, eighteen months and five years, and they have over a fifty percent success rate at the five-year mark. Really, as a board, this is trying to focus on student first and make sure that we're putting our curriculum together and make sure that we're giving them the right placement for not just college, but for career afterwards. Getting data like that to make sure, even if it's just to reassure us that we're doing the right thing, is key. So I will hand this off to Dr. Martslove, and he can review it and pass it along to you guys. Did we, getting specific on the opt-out tests? I know Commissioner Elia spoke to us for a good hour on Friday afternoon, Friday late morning and afternoon. And one of the things she said, they were making changes on the test, was that they were going to mandate that all future tests, starting from this year, would be one hundred percent picked by New York State teachers. She really didn't elaborate too much on that. I've heard some speculation on that, that this is kind of, here's the pool of questions, you know, kind of a survey, pick the best question you think, that sort of thing. Have you heard anything more on that to make these tests a little more fair?
I do think your question is a well-worded one because that wording's interesting. Do you pick from what's there or are you picking more broadly? I think that has yet to be defined. Certainly, the reach out to districts and teachers, I would say specifically stakeholders, does seem to be greater. I don't know that it's at the level that we all quite want yet. It should be even more than what it is now. I think it's been better. It's not where it needs to be quite yet. Again, we're dealing with millions of dollars of contracts that they're still under, the looming CBT or computer-based testing piece. As you know, we've spoken about that before. We tend to hear a couple of different things there. They're committed to it. It's a goal, not a requirement. So even on that front, you know, there's still some looming questions. So all I can say is there does seem to be a greater willingness and emphasis on including educators. Specific to the items, I think it's going to be really hard to say because there's still test bank, the test banks are still there. So my hope is it's more of an item writing and an item development because again, and you can start there with a bank. I've been part of item writing myself before, so you can certainly start with something and not start from scratch, but it's important that the educators are the ones at the table doing that. So we're going to do everything in our power to continue to advocate for that and support those in our district who have been part of committees or item writing. We have had some representation. I'd like to see it grow for all educators. So my hope is it's going to turn into what we all hope it will be.
Thank you. There are no personnel matters to discuss this month, so we'll jump right to the capital project presentation. Dr. Martslove?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Maturski to share some information about our potential next capital project so that the board is fully updated. I want to thank the leadership team members as well as our principals and instructional specialists who have helped with all of the thinking and input into where we are so far. So, Mr. Maturski, you want to take it away and share with the board some of our process?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Martslove. I will provide a brief review tonight of what we're looking to accomplish in our, what we're calling our two thousand and eighteen capital project. We have several areas of focus. The first will be to look at our renovation of our high school music space. And this will be looked at in several different specific areas, one being acoustical renovations in classrooms and auditoriums, and the update of our current space, and in looking at the potential of additions at the high school level only. We will be looking to classify some of these work issues as either a type one or a type two. A type one renovation would be a comprehensive renovation of the space, and type two would be a more of a targeted renovation of the space, which would be an example such as an acoustical modification and light construction. Secondly, as I mentioned, we're going to also be looking at our middle school music space. This would be a more limited review, which would be more or less acoustical renovations in classrooms. So again, we'll be looking at how we can improve those spaces and do some minor renovations. One note, equipment will not be part of this project, so the purchase of any type of new instruments or anything of that matter, that would become part of the district's annual budget process and not included in the proposition. In addition to that, we do have some facility-related infrastructure needs that we do have to look at, one being the replacement of school roofs at both Transit Middle and Maple West Elementary. Those are basically at the end of their useful life, and since these projects normally take about five years to go from beginning to end, we would need to accomplish that work in this project. And then we're also going to look at a very limited level of other items similar, not such high items, but like specific mechanical units that would be expiring between that five-year period so that we could address those items. And then lastly, every time you do submit a capital project to the New York State Education Department, they go back and review our five-year building condition survey. So we are looking at those items to see if there's anything that may actually be required to be addressed. So as we looked at our music space items, we're doing it on a holistic basis. So we're going to look at our auditorium acoustics. We're going to look at auditorium stage lighting at East and South High Schools. North High School stage lighting has already been replaced with LED lights, so that has been completed. We will look at auditorium sound systems, and we will review the acoustical requirements of, again, the high school and the middle schools, as well as the middle school auditoriums. And then lastly, we also know that the way that the mechanical systems work in music classrooms can impact learning in that area, so we will be looking at specific ways to limit that type of noise. The project timeline will begin, has begun actually, in September, and it will go through May two thousand and eighteen. And that really is the development of the scope of the project. So that is really detailing out the type of items that we will be including in the project. We are looking at a targeted proposition vote date of December two thousand and eighteen, and we are actively obtaining involvement from many people at both the high school and middle school level. And we're doing that through the formation of music space input teams. And this is composed of the principal and two music teachers that are selected from each school. And then we also are encouraging those teams to have larger groups within their school to discuss the type of items that they are wanting to prioritize and provide back to the district-level teams. So what are the responsibilities of those teams? They're develop a prioritized list of five items that they would like to see occur in their school that are within the project scope and guidelines. They're going to communicate the design preferences of information to the district project team, provide input to the consultant's questions, and they're going to communicate, update project information to their own school colleagues. The final project guidelines will be defined by the proposition amount, and that's going to be looked at upon consideration of many different items, including historical costs for music programs, construction costs as we develop the dollar amount to the requirements that they're providing to us, and then the ability for the district, of course, to fund the project within our financial requirements. So what are some examples of a requested project item? One item would be such as a building addition that would provide two new classrooms that provide multi-use space for band orchestra choral, and they may want to have individual spaces that are positioned adjacent to school offices, to teacher offices. Another option would be to provide less possibly of a addition, and in that way prioritize orchestra performances, requiring special attention to acoustical properties of the auditorium and the sound system, and also create such items as addressing the fly space that's above the lighting systems in the auditoriums and creating an orchestra pit. Now, this is just general ideas for them to be aware of. And then the third item that was provided as an example would be an additional addition that provides one large multi-use space for band orchestra choral and allowing for type one renovation and reconfigurations of existing classrooms. 1 renovation and reconfigurations of existing classrooms, as well as some other items that would provide ADA access, of course, to students, and a suggestion such as providing a semicircle teaching environment for those classes. So possible project items, this was some general items that we were aware of, that have been requested or put on a requested list in the past. So of course, building additions at the high school, dressing area for drama students, storage room for uniforms and props, music band space of a minimum space of 70,000 square feet with high ceilings, music theory classroom with specific technology, new stage lighting in the auditoriums, new sound system in the auditoriums, a number of practice rooms that might be required, temperature-controlled storage for instruments, and specific requests for general music classrooms. So developing the other project, the development representatives on the project team at the district level include myself, Dr. Baylen, Mr. Michael Russo, instructional specialist for Fine and Performing Arts Business, Mr. Langlatz, our Director of Facilities. We have looked to obtain the services of Cadenny Architects, another firm, ABL Designs for Acoustical Review, and Campus Construction Management as the construction manager. And just to give you a little information on these professionals, Cadenny Architects was selected by a district committee after we provided an RFP to our current three architects, and their firm came to the top by all members of our committee. Their project-related experience includes work at the City of Buffalo's East High School Music Suite and Auditorium, North Tonawanda Schools Music Room and Auditoriums, Allegheny Limestone Music Classrooms, Akron Schools Music Space, and additionally, their firm was involved in renovating the Shea's Performing Arts Theater and Rockwell Hall. ABL Designs, as I mentioned, is the acoustical consultant. They have done work throughout the northeastern United States. Some of the work that they've completed has been at the Chautauqua Institute of Music, Finger Lakes Community College Performing Arts Center, Fredonia Mason Hall, Nazri Center for Arts at the College of St. Rose in Albany, New York, and Nazareth College Rehearsal Halls. Additionally, our campus construction team has been with the district now for about 10 years, and what they bring to this project is an expertise and knowledge of our buildings. They are able to go through the construction plans and then, as we're developing the scope, and provide feedback on what knowledge they have and how to minimize certain items that may improve our budget situation. They have a proven cost also for managing projects within our timelines. They have provided good cost estimates to us in the past, very respected by the architect and the contractor community, and they are very committed to this project, and they recognize that there will be some difficult obstacles that we will have to overcome in design planning and in construction. So looking at some of the project cost comparisons, I think this is important for everyone to know at the very beginning, classroom music renovations cost about 25% to 50% more than a general use classroom. So as we're going into that, we're aware of that, and we're going to be looking to try and provide some efficiencies where possible. If you're doing an addition, it's 20% more than a general music education classroom addition, and an addition at South High School in particular, as we found out through the recent work on the athletic field, due to the escarpment rock, that will most likely cost 20% more than the other additions. Typical items that cost more and lead to the higher cost are the need to have enhancements in mechanical systems, door windows, all for acoustical purposes and acoustical treatments, dehumidification systems, risers, ADA-related items in those spaces, and again, acoustical enhancements and materials that are now computerized. So all those items will be closely examined, and they will impact the final cost at each school, as well as the proposition amount. Project financing, as you know from the past, our goal is always to minimize the impact to the general fund budget, and we will look at our 9901 budget codes. That's our debt service amounts that are in our general fund. As you know, the level debt service is simply moving forward when we have enough debt payoff or roll-off that allows us to have those funds available to buy new debt or to take out new debt in the project. One of the things that you heard from the auditors earlier this evening was the fact that the board authorized some debt payoff last June. That enhances our ability to actually purchase more and fund more for this project, and we will continue to look to do those type of efficiencies to provide the funding that will not impact general fund, but at the same time provides us enough of the required funding for what will be requested here. Additionally, we have been also saving money in our capital reserves, and that's an ongoing item, so we will be looking at how we can allocate dollars from that to support this project. And finally, the actual budget amount will be determined sometime in the fall/winter of this current school year, 2017-18. State aid is something that we always look to obtain from capital projects, and the state has made some changes in how they pay aid to schools, and it will definitely have an impact on this project. A couple of reasons for that impact are that they now will look at how much enrollment is impacting an addition. It's not enrollment of a program, it's enrollment at the district. So if there's not an increased amount of enrollment at a school, they will not necessarily aid that project at the maximum levels that we would be able to obtain here. So we will be looking at obtaining estimates on that as we move forward in the next few months. Additionally, they have a reduction of what aid you can receive in what is called incidental cost lines, and they look at how much you have already spent in all your other projects over a five-year period. And if you're at your maximum, they will not aid you anything more in that area. So again, another thing to be aware of, and we will be looking very closely at that to determine the total aid that we will receive on this new project as we develop the budget and the proposition amount. So the next steps for the project are that, in reality, many of these things have already happened and are underway. Two teachers were selected to be members of their music space input teams at the schools. We already have these group names. The schools have already established their meeting schedules, and they have been meeting, and they were, they're starting to provide some input back to us here, so that we can forward the information on to our architects. And then they're, so again, they're at the point now, we're toward the end of this month, they will be providing us with their five prioritized items, and then at that point, we will have our architects start to do additional walkthroughs into the space. So the action items, the dates that we're looking at in the very near future, again, as of 2/6/17, the schools have already developed and sent their music input team members to us. They've had their first meetings. Their items are due by the end of this month. That's their first item, so you'll see that they have a lot of additional input into the process. So they're going to discuss and agree on what the goals are for their school in this month. They're going to select those top five items. They're going to provide comments on what they would like to have accomplished with their top five items, and they're going to give us some preliminary ideas on the parameters on what they are looking for in their schools. These teams will continue to be involved, as I said, throughout the process, so they're going to be making decisions from now right through the end of March. We're going to continue to review their project scope, come up with some cost estimates over that time. They'll be meeting with not just the project team, but most likely with the architect to obtain detailed information on specific items that they wish to have built in their buildings. And we're providing a two-way level of communication using Mr. Russo as that point person with them. And as we get information from one school, we're making sure that all the schools are shared with the feedback, so that they all have the same type of information when they may have similar questions to this. So that's a very quick review of what we're doing, and at this time, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ms. Leatherburn?
I have two questions. You mentioned that the schools are prioritizing five items that they would like. Is this money intended to be equally spent amongst the three high schools primarily, or is it going to be more based on need?
It's probably going to be equalized as best as possible. That's normally what we try and do. I will say that we provided guidance to them on five items with the knowledge that they probably will not get all five items, and that's why they should be looking at the prioritization process. So, but yes, we will try and provide an equal amount to every building. That's going to be our goal.
Thank you. My second question is about student input. In what way are our music students able to have a voice in this decision-making?
I would say that that would go back to their teachers and through their teachers, because their teachers are very involved in this whole process. So that can be worked through the teachers and the principals at the building levels.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Vega?
You mentioned that there would be available funds from capital reserves, and then you also had the slide about state aid. Do we have an understanding of the scope of this project and how much of that would be covered versus how much would impact our budget? Is it too early to tell?
It really is too early to tell. There's a lot of issues that have to be worked through. The first thing that we do, and this is the same process we use for every single capital project, is we look at the list. And that list will include all of those items from the music, as well as the roof costs, as well as if there's a few items that we have, infrastructure, and then we'll see what that will entail. An example is when we did our last facility capital project, we had a list of $60 million, and we wound up with 23. So there's always more to do than we can fund, and the idea will be we prioritize, we get the best we can, we look at efficiencies of how we can build things better, and then we work with the user, and especially in music, because they are very unique, as we know, and we want to make sure that we try and put the best we can in those spaces, and do it, though, at a cost-efficient manner.
Okay. So we don't quite know the parameters of how much will be funded state, but is my understanding correct that this would need to be approved by the community?
Correct.
Okay. And so then I guess my next question is, I love the idea of teams working together to figure out the way the project should work and what the building needs most. How was this need determined in the first place, that music spaces needed to be renovated? Was that something that came from teams or a district committee to go this route for the next district capital project?
It really was the next focal project for the district. I know that Dr. Baylen chaired a committee last year where they were talking about many different things in the music area, and this was one item that came up. I know that I've walked the music spaces myself. We've done some limited improvements in them. However, they do need to be renovated. Certainly, an addition would be also very useful to these programs, and that's going to be the point that is going to really have to be looked at, so that we can mix both of those things together in a proper manner. Because again, there's, you know, we want to support every single program in the district, and we could go back to every program and be looking at doing some type of renovation in the buildings, but we have to do it on a timely manner, and at this point, it's really the music department's turn.
Music is near and dear to my heart, so I'm not arguing with you. I'm thinking more of our community and the input they would have and the information that they would want. So my understanding of this timeline is that these teams would come together to come up with a proposal, and then that's what would be put forth to the committee to vote on whether or not that funding would be approved, or is this already?
No, it's, I, there's a lot more that will occur. They're going to provide information to us on what their priorities would be. We will then go into the space with the architects, and we will come up with what we would call a preliminary design, and that's at a very high level. It's just to say, okay, we're going to look at this particular music classroom, and we know that you need to replace all the doors and all the windows and do the mechanical system, and that's, and then we're going to do finishes. That will cost you X dollars to do that. And then we're going to look at all those items that they put together, and that's going to be at, you know, $50 million. And we're going to say, well, we can only do 20 million, and then, and that's due to the funding. That's going to be where the funding comes into play. So at that point, we're going to go back to each building and say, this is what we can do. What do you want to do? Do you have any suggestions? Would you like to modify some of your proposals? And that's why we're going to be working back down with them to say, this is what we can afford, what and how can we make this work for you?
Okay. My last question is about those reserves and state aid funding. Am I right to assume that some of this money is intended for capital projects such as this, of building improvement that couldn't be used in other areas like instruction?
We have, there's a couple of reserves that are left that we have in place. The one reserve is for any type of building construction. The other reserve, that's a newer reserve, is for infrastructure changes. So that reserve would be more appropriate for mechanical systems and roofs, whereas the other one could be used for something like this. Not that it's that infrastructure, but it's more targeted.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mecca?
Mary, those are great questions, by the way. It made me think of things that I hadn't previously considered.
Thanks.
And thanks for the great presentation. And I think that at this time, after we have improved the sports fields, it makes perfect sense to look at an area in the arts, such as music. I think the question I came upon listening to Mary's question has to do with a presentation we saw maybe one or two meetings prior, I believe, where we saw that at South, there was going to be an actual physical expansion of the building, and I guess, or that was an idea, I suppose. Is that the idea for each of the high schools, or in some cases, would we just modify the existing spaces?
I think the initial thought going into it is that all three high schools would have some form of an addition. Again, as you saw from the presentation, additions are much more expensive, and music renovations in itself are much more expensive. So the thought would probably be, and that would go down to the prioritization, if they want an addition, they might say, well, let's not do as much in our classrooms, because we can get this piece which we really need. So that's why the decisions have to go back to the schools and really the teachers, because they're the ones that will be working in these spaces, and their input is going to be critical.
So then following up on that, if one school felt that they needed substantial investments in the current space, is it possible that they might choose not to have an expansion in favor of more modifications, or more expansion?
It's possible.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, the record is open, and it's really, we're going to be looking to them to tell us where their priorities are.
Thank you.
Dr. Vannater?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Mary, great questions, and I'm going to actually ask if we could just get a little more detail, just because it was before my time on the board, just understanding kind of... just because it was before my time on the board, just understanding kind of the due diligence behind how, and music's very close to my heart, I was in bands and orchestras throughout my time in Williamsville, but can you just help me understand how it was decided on this is where the capital funding is going to go versus, I'm sure there are other antiquated areas in the building, laboratories, old microscopes, you know, that are perhaps also in need of additional funding. Can someone just go through the due diligence around how it was prioritized and decided upon that this is really where the focus should be? And then the second component would be, do we know that that resonates with community members that may be asked to vote on this from an appropriation standpoint?
Sure. We do and have done ongoing capital project work pretty much on a continuous basis here. I've done probably over $100 million worth of work since I've been in my position, so it kind of goes to the fact that we have already renovated, say, the science classrooms at South High. We just put a roof on there last summer. We have done lavatory work at South High and renovated all those spaces, and we're actually doing more lavatory work next summer in the completion of the current facility project over there. That type of work has been ongoing at every single building in this district. You know, at the elementary schools, we did lavatory renovations at Forest Elementary this past summer, and Maple East Elementary is scheduled to be done next summer. You know, the buildings are, if you look at our balance sheet, you know, our building amounts are very high value, and as you can imagine, every building is something that needs to be kept up, and it's very costly to do that. We could easily spend $100 million throughout the district, and I think our buildings are in excellent condition, but we could update them. I think it comes down to, you know, when you do walk these spaces, and I think a great example is East High School. Their space has really been almost untouched, I think, since that building has opened. And so, you know, we do try and prioritize, we go and try and address infrastructure items first. We do have more roofs to do, that's probably our next major item. I think we're about halfway through the district now on roof replacements. The prior major item we replaced were the heating systems, and we have, we completed all the boiler heating system replacements about four years ago. So now we're good for another, hopefully, 20 years on those. So it really becomes the roofs, and then there are ongoing items. I mean, I can tell you, one item that we'll be adding here is something called the Dectron unit at East High School. That's a dehumidification system for their pool. That unit is ready to go. We just did a repair of it over the last couple of weeks. We're going to keep it going until we can get to this project, and then we're going to replace it. So there's a lot of work, so I'm giving you a long explanation, but you know, the answer is that we always try and do something that is program-important, and this is definitely program-important.
Thank you. And then just the second part, just in terms of community input, surveying, to what extent have we kind of taken the temperature of the community around this?
I think that that's something that we, and Dr. Marzloff can certainly respond also to this, but from my perspective, you know, it becomes something that you see when you go to some of the events and the feedback that you receive from the people at the events. You know, we've tried very hard to make sure the auditorium lighting systems are all operating correctly, and you know, when you have antiquated lights that, you know, are 30 years old, sometimes you just can't, you know, we do testing before those events, and sometimes they still burn out. And it's not something that we're planning or we're ignoring, it's that they're old. You know, the lighting system over at South High is not LED, it's old, and we were looking at it over the summer, and a couple of things I didn't mention here is we've already had the architects walk through all the buildings in the summer. So they did a preliminary walkthrough, so they knew exactly what they're getting into. We also had the AVL consultants do walkthroughs in the summer, too. So they have a preliminary idea, and now we're just waiting for the feedback. So the purpose from my perspective is that you have a great music teachers group here. They're always looking for improvement, and that's the type of feedback that I know I've heard from, and so that's what I would say.
Yeah, I would just say historically, we've never surveyed our community before about what our capital project items should be. That's more of an internal decision based on the condition of our buildings, the condition of our facilities. As Mr. Maturski mentioned, we did a walkthrough a couple of years ago, thinking about the process for the next project as we were developing the 2015 capital project. And when you see things like at South High School where you need to unplug a vending machine in the hallway in order for the podium microphone to work and get enough electricity, that's an issue that shouldn't exist in 20, at the time, 2015, in a high-performing school district in a terrific school like South. So that's just one small example, and we saw many examples at all three of our high schools. And in addition, if you look at what the music space was built for in terms of student participation and involvement, it doesn't come close to what the actual enrollment is. So it's one of the side effects, if you will, one of the problems of having a terrific music program is lots of kids want to enroll in it, and you only have so much space, and at some point, you need to expand that so that it's a more comfortable learning situation for everybody. So those are just some of the reasons. Last year, we had teams of music teachers visit facilities all around Western and Central New York State, looking at what other school districts have done. Our district's a little different in that we have three high schools. Some districts do like a one-major performing arts center type of situation. We decided that's not going to work well for us. All of our three schools have their own unique cultures and identities, and we want to be respectful of that and be able to provide, as Mr. Maturski mentioned, equally as much as possible for each of them. So all those things taken into consideration has sort of led us to where we are with this. If you think there are other areas we should look at instead, or in lieu of music, we'd be happy to consider that. We're very early in the process right now.
No, I just was hoping to just understand the logic and just the due diligence behind it. I think it makes complete sense, and I'm a product of Williamsville East and drama club and band and orchestra at South, so I probably was in the same facilities and the same condition of least disease as they are today. The only other thought, not to complicate it, but Dr. Marzloff, I think a number of times in the past, which I think is a great idea, you suggested that when we're looking at, and granted, this is a capital project, not necessarily community issues, but we want to understand kind of the pulse of what's going on in the community, what people are thinking. We've suggested maybe doing a little more due diligence around surveying what they're interested in. We certainly aren't going to survey, you know, do we need to change the laboratories at Maple East or something like that, but it could be an opportunity in the spirit of additional dialogue and communication with the community to, when we're going into something, especially if we're going to ask taxpayers to pay more money for something, at least say, hey, you know, this is what we're thinking about doing, does this seem to make sense to you? Just a little testing of where the community stands.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Dr. Vannater. I'm glad you mentioned that. We are planning on, in the next five to six weeks, have a very general survey, if you will, going out to parents and community members in our district, but it's not going to point to anything like a facilities project, but it doesn't mean follow-up surveys after that. Couldn't ask a question, what do you think our facilities priority should be going into the future? It might be an interesting question to hear the feedback from our community on that. And then last, to your point about asking the community to support it from a budget standpoint, our district has a long history of what's called a level debt service plan, where we try not to take on any new debt when we do a capital project. And that's been very helpful for the Williamsville Central School District in particular, because when you get the state aid on it, you're not using it to pay back debt, you're using it to support program for kids. And that's really how we try to operate it, so that we're not saying to our community, hey, we want to build these new music spaces at our three high schools, it's going to cost our community $100 more a year for each $200,000 worth of assessed property value. We don't want to do that. We want to try to do it with no local tax impact, that we can build it that way with existing funds in our budget, with state aid, and with capital reserves. And if we can do that, now we've got a true win-win-win. You get a new facility, you get it, it's all paid for, and you're not increasing anyone's tax burden, which is already high enough.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that explanation, because that makes a lot of sense, and I think the biggest thing is communicating to the community that this money doesn't, would not go towards maybe hiring new teachers. It's just the communication of this money is set aside for this project, the facilities project, because I think that's sometimes the misconception of it all. I just would like to make a comment that I truly believe that you need accolades, Dr. Marzloff, Mr. Maturski, Keith, all of the people involved. This is a capital project, as many of us know, is a massive, massive undertaking that takes years. So we literally just ended a major one, and to think that we already are hitting the ground running and having a new one already is truly amazing. Look at how many other districts are doing this. They're not. So I think, once again, it exceeds all expectations, and I love the balance that we just did sports facilities, and now we're going ahead and looking at the arts and music. I think it's outstanding. So I just say thank you. I think it just makes this district even better, and I know how time-consuming it must be and the numbers behind it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Vansys. A lot of the credit would go to Mr. Maturski, who does a tremendous job spearheading all of this for our community, so thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I have to say, when Dr. Marzloff started throwing out fictitious estimates for tax increases, I immediately looked over at the press table, looking to make sure he wasn't taking down any notes over there. I do recall a presentation a few, I can't even put a timeline on it, so I'm going to probably get this wrong, but it might be good to call up these numbers. I remember something from years ago, talking about music growth in our schools, where we were when we percent enrollment, and again, this is a long time ago, so I don't remember the numbers, but I want to say we were 25, 30% student at the time that the facilities were built, and today we're pushing 55, almost 60% enrollment or something, something along those lines. So please, don't quote me. But it may be in our benefit to try and pull those numbers out and actually find out what those real numbers are. I do understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that our music program has been experiencing stellar growth over year after year, and more than half of all of our students at all of our high schools are enrolled in the music programs, which is a huge kudos to not only the teachers but the district for providing the funds for these programs and stuff like that. Let me jump to the end game on this, and let's go back to timelines. If this is put up against the voters in December of 2018, and let's just hypothetically say that they approve it, what is our timelines for putting shovels in the ground, and what would our timelines be for having completion?
You'd probably look at completion in 2021. It would start, one of the complexities with this just is much different, is that the type of renovations that would be happening in addition could happen at the same time that school is going on, so that's a plus. On the other hand, when you start to renovate the general classrooms, you're probably not going to get that all done in the summer, so you're going to want to move students possibly in the off-year to the newly renovated space. So that's where you have some logistical issues that we have to work through. And then, of course, you have, you know, the design time, and you have the SED approval time, that's a year after approval that you just have to wait. So we're thinking it'll be a two-year construction timeline.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services to approve the capital project change orders up to $10,000 effective October 18th, 2017, as presented? This is Vansys, a second. Dr. Vannater, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to enter into professional service agreements for the Architect and Construction Management Services for the 2018 Music Improvement Facility Infrastructure Project as presented? Mrs. Beeger? Second. Mrs. Vansys? Any discussion, comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the amended impartial hearing officer rationale appointments as presented? Excuse me?
Rotational.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I misread that, rotational appointment. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the amended impartial hearing officers rotational appointments as presented? That makes a lot more sense. Dr. McClary, thank you, second. Mr. McCaugh, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under the committee of the whole? Are there any correspondences to discuss? Last chance. Our next regular board meeting will be held on November the 14th, that's Tuesday night of this year, with public session starting at 7:00 PM. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mrs. Beeger, second. Dr. Vannater, any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Have a good night.
Yeah.